Testing, oh, there we go. We got it now. Well, welcome, folks. If all we have to do is to offer cookies and punch to get this kind of attendance, I think we may be on to something. What do you think, board? Right? Good evening, folks. The school board meeting is now called to order, and I will ask Ms. Wolf to lead us in the pledge this evening.
Thank you. We even have a real flag. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Callahan, would you please take the role and so record? The chair will entertain a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
I move that the school board approve the agenda as written. Second.
There's been a motion and second in the discussion. Here, no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
For all opposed, say no. Folks, before we get started into most of the agenda items, I will ask that you join us for a moment of silence for Mr. Jack Yow, who passed away on February the 6th. Mr. Yow was 98 years old and taught agriculture in Faukeer County schools from the end of World War II well into the 1980s. And our prayers, of course, are with the family. So if you would join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. Folks, we have many recognitions this evening, so come forward when you hear your name. Now, if you are here to be recognized for your nomination for one of the classified employees or the Tree Awards, please exit the door to your left to pick up your certificate.
To their left.
To their left, over here.
That one.
Okay. To pick up your certificates after you have been recognized, okay? Now, if you are a student or a teacher, come forward when you hear your name and return to your seat following the recognition. We will take a few moments after the recognitions for those of you who do not wish to stay for the whole meeting and wish to leave at that time. One other item, if you are here to receive an award and you did not RSVP, you will have to see Ginger after the meeting. Ginger, where are you? She's right here. Okay, folks? All right. Now, I think it's time for us to go down and join the audience there for the presentations.
Tonight, I am proud to introduce the nominees for the 5th Annual Classified Awards. As many of you know, the classified awards, better known as the Tree Awards, are a result of the Aspirations 2015 Strategic Plan. This program was established to ensure that classified employees were recognized for their outstanding work accomplishments, interaction with others, demonstrating initiative, training and development activities, along with their ability to improve work processes. We will begin with the Aspen Tree Award. If I could have all the nominees within this category come to this side of the auditorium. And then, as you hear your name announced, please come to the front so that the school board members can greet and thank you for all that you do. Do we have any Aspen Tree Award recipients? Okay. The nominees for this category are Pearl Anz, Jerry Shawday, Dale Fitzhugh, Rhonda Fowler, Ruth Harris, Tommy McEwen, Dana Merritt, Rhonda Mills, Joyce O'Banion, Diane Orndoff, Terri Sisk, and Harrison Sutfin. Congratulations to the Aspen Tree nominees. If I could have all the nominees within this category come to the side of the auditorium. Cindy Arbogast, I'm sorry. The Maple Tree Award is for custodians, area building managers, and our courier. A maple tree represents balance, promise, and practicality. So now, Cindy Arbogast, Stacy Bell, Dee Britt, Rosalyn Carter, Billy Jean Harris, Jim Johnson, Gary Qualick, Maria Lopez, Candelaria Martinez, Estelle Robinson, Jerry Spiker, and John Thomas. Next, we have the Oak Tree Award. If I could have all the nominees within this category come to this side of the auditorium. The Oak Tree Award is for instructional assistance, library assistance, bus aids, and computer lab assistance. An oak tree represents strength and courage. Lisa Burton, Polly Davis, Gwen Gaines, Debbie Gibson, Ellen Gray, Cindy Griffith, Victoria Haley, Diane Horas, Victoria Hill, Marian Jones, Jen King, Jen Layman, Katrina Lee, Dorothy McCoy, Dawn Martin, Jean Martin, Nancy May, Cynthia Patterson, Alyssa Peck, Michael Pickett, Cindy Schaefer, Megan Schaefer, Liz Sennett, Peggy Spiteri, and Marilyn Steinmetz. Congratulations to the Oak Tree Award nominees. Before moving on to the Pine Tree Award, I failed to announce the Aspen Tree Award is for bus drivers, and the Aspen Tree represents determination and overcoming fears and doubts. So now, we will recognize the Pine Tree Award nominees. If I could have all those nominees come to this side of the auditorium. The Pine Tree Award is for the school nutrition staff. The pine tree represents creativity, life, longevity, and immortality. The nominees for the Pine Tree Award are Tori Kearns, Sandy Owens, Cynthia Props, Lori Congratulations to the Pine Tree Award nominees. And finally, we have the Willow Tree Award. If we could have all the nominees within this final category come to the side of the The Willow Tree Award is represented by the clerical, school health nurses, and support staff. The Willow Tree symbolizes healing, inner vision, and dreams. The nominees are Cheryl Carter, Karen Sarah, Barbara Correa, Sharon Creasy, Katerina Emery, Carol Hess, Venetia Johnson, Kathy Leskalit, Karen Linsky, Krista McDaniel, Jenny Mack, Yvonne Munley, Amy Shingler, Linda Stribling, Debbie Spotko, Lori Untied, Robin Winkle, and Chris Yike. Congratulations to the Willow Tree Award nominees. This concludes the presentation of the 2015-16 School Year nominations. Please join me in one last round of applause for all of the year's nominees.
All right, now for the Blue Star Schools Award. Would Sam Cox, Tripp Burton, Diana Story, Gail Baumann, Karen Chipman, Kimberlin Crowe, Jillian Nabrotsky, Kathleen Lynch, Joyce Wilson, Erin DeVelo, Karen Patty, and Kim Hesel, please join us up front. Working in Supportive Education, WISE, is an educational organization dedicated to providing educational support services nationwide, building financial literacy, fostering business and social entrepreneurship, and preparing students for college and the global workplace. On September 28th, the WISE program recognized Faukeer High School and Liberty High School as the 2014-15 Blue Star Schools for their Financial Literacy Education. To earn this national recognition, schools testing 10 or more students had to achieve a 75% pass rate on the WISE Financial Literacy Certification Test and have a majority of students on a given grade level take the test, or have the students who took it achieve an average of 85% or higher. FHS and LHS were honored as Blue Star Schools at the Annual Money Power Conference in Financial Literacy in New York City on November 3rd. Congratulations to Mr. Burton and Mr. Cox and their faculty who made this award possible. And Diana Story. Folks, every week, we give an award to one teacher in the school division, the most outstanding teacher in that school division. It's called the Rising Tide Award. We give one per week, and last week, the winner was Diana Story from Faukeer High School.
Thank you.
Decided to get the most embarrassment I could possibly get out of you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Happy for you.
Thank you.
Ready? Okay. Thank you very much. The Art Teacher of the Year Award. Would, will Marissa Pappas please join us up front? Marissa, I saw you. There you are.
Thank you.
On November 14th, art teachers throughout the Commonwealth gathered at the Virginia Art Education Association Conference in Roanoke to celebrate excellence within their field. When Marissa Pappas heard her name announced as the winner of the Virginia and Blue Ridge Region Art Educator of the Year, Middle School Division, she was moved to tears. She shared that it gave her a warm feeling to know that her colleagues who nominated her value what she does. Ms. Pappas helped organize and coordinate the Faukeer County Youth Art Month, otherwise known as YAM. She began the National Junior Arts Society at her school in 2013 and went to Richmond to work on the new correlations for K-12 visual arts and instructional strategies. She has presented at both national and state art conferences, sharing her knowledge and expertise with fellow educators. FCPS has also received the award of merit for being awarded 3rd place in the Virginia YAM Book Competition. Ms. Pappas was also recently recognized as a Washington Post Teacher of the Year nominee. Wow. Please join us as we congratulate Ms. Pappas for her outstanding achievements. Congratulations. Awesome. The ASE NATEF Accreditation. Will Scott Freeman and Craig Kennard, both of whom students have done work on my personal vehicles, please come forward. The FCPS Automotive Training Program at Faukeer High School has received accreditation by NATEF, the National Institute for Automotive Services Excellence. To achieve this coveted recognition, the school's automotive training program underwent rigorous evaluation by the National Automotive Technicians Education Foundation, meeting strict industry standards. This program increases cooperation between local education and industry leaders and gives assurances that FCPS graduates in the automotive training program will be employable entry-level technicians. That's outstanding. We want to convey our special appreciation to Craig Kennard, who teaches automotive body repair at FHS, and Scott Freeman, who teaches the Technical Automotive Program at FHS. Many of their students have received state and national recognitions in the past, and we will honor two of these students later this evening. Please join us as we congratulate Mr. Freeman, Mr. Kennard, and the outstanding automotive program. Will Wendy Wilcox and Andrea Martins please join us up front? Nominated by their area partnership managers and the educational support consultants for exceptional enthusiasm and amazing Imagine Learning innovations, Pearson Elementary is recognized as an Imagine Learning super school. With the support of Pearson's principal, Ms. Wilcox, ESL teacher, and Washington Post Teacher of the Year nominee, Ms. Martins implemented Imagine Learning at Pearson in a way that allows all students 90 minutes or more on the program, in this program, each week. Imagine Learning uses adaptive technology to provide individualized language and literacy instruction and help students with their reading skills. The digital tool provides what each student needs, complete literacy instruction for all students in primary grades, as well as intervention for grades 4 and 5 in building key skills and concepts. The interactive data tools help teachers pinpoint where students struggle, targeting them for interventions, one-on-one small group or whole class settings. We note that Ms. Martins was also a Teacher of the Year nominee. We congratulate Ms. Wilcox and Ms. Martins and the students at Pearson for being an Imagine Learning super school. Congratulations. Very good. Congratulations. AP Scholars, and we have a lot of AP Scholars here. Will all the AP Scholars please join us up front? AP Scholars. The AP program offers AP Scholars awards to recognize high school students who have demonstrated college-level achievement through AP courses and exams. During the school year 2014-15, 40 FCPS students, either in their junior or senior year, were named AP Scholars with distinction. These students earned an average 3.5 on all AP exams taken, and scores of 3 or higher on five or more of these exams. Wow. I don't think I could've got a cumulative 3 on, if I'd taken five exams. Please step forward when I call your name, and as is the custom at these events, if I pronounce your child's name wrong, please feel free to yell it out as the correct pronunciation as loudly as you can. Xander Ackerman, Karina Bilger, Tyler Croson, Stephen Estes, Austin Evans, James Filson, Casey Griffin, Inamesset Ikasi Otu, Ivy Sandberg, Madeline or Madeline McComb, Christina Montamorano, Harrison Freeman, Niles Ribero, Claire Huffine, Kristen Kelly, Grace Surie, Lilianne Heati Aha, and Tess Vartanian. Congratulations. Two students this evening, Charles Crum and Tad Wojcik, scored well enough on AP exams to be named national AP Scholars. To achieve this honor, students had to earn an average score of at least four on all AP exams taken, and scores of four or higher on eight or more, I just can't even imagine this, eight or more of these tests. Well done, Charles and Tad. Are Charles and Tad here? Come on up. We do not receive these scores until midsummer, and we are happy that many of our graduates who earned AP Scholars with distinction and national AP Scholars last year are on spring break from college. I can't imagine why anyone would want to go on spring break instead of being here at Liberty High School. And from college and can be recognized, however, there are students who currently attend FCPS who have graduated that were unable to attend, and we would like to recognize them also. Students who are earning AP Scholars with distinction are, these folks again couldn't be here tonight, Michaela Berada, Troy Hicks, Angel Marshall, Sean Machaco, Asia or Asa Radajan, Shay Raul, Juliana Schwint, Olivia Burke, Dana Layman, Shannon McAvoy, Quinn Morrow, Megan Rosenberger, Haley Woleska, and Austin Smith. Congratulations to those folks. And finally, students who earn national AP Scholars, which is an amazing accomplishment. We had six of them. Rhiannon Begley, and these are all graduates, by the way, Bradley Hauska, Derek Strauss, Claire Burke, Zachary Kersey, and Rachel Seeburger. Please join me in congratulating the students.
We're now going to move to some students who received national merit scholarship awards, and you're going to hear some of those same names. So we would like to ask the students who achieved national merit scholarship status to please come forward over to this side, and then we will get to your names. And here's a little bit about this. The National Merit Scholarship Program is an academic competition for recognition and scholarships that began in 1955. High school students enter the National Merit Program by taking the PSAT and the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, which serves as an initial screen for approximately 1.5 million students. Of the 1.5 million, some 50,000 qualify with highest scores in critical reading, mathematics, and writing, and they qualify for this recognition. That places them in the top 5% across the nation. These high scores are notified through their schools that they have qualified as either a commended student or a semifinalist. And these are the students who have received the letter of commendation, and we're going to ask you to come forward as I call your name. Christopher Parrios Parrios, Kristen Kelly, Mark Whitefield, Xander Ackerman, Christina Montamorano, and she's coming forward quickly, and Maxon Mendel. I don't see Maxon here. Laura Newbill, Austin Brials, and Peter Myers. Also winning this letter of commendation was Juliana Schwint, who was unable to attend This leaves us with one student, right there, who was designated as a semifinalist. You all need to listen to this, in the 61st Annual National Merit Scholarship Program. And then, he was named as a finalist, receiving a certificate of merit, which gives him the opportunity to compete for the 7,400 National Merit Scholarships worth over $32 million. Tad Wojcik, I'm pronouncing it correctly, please step forward. Wojcik. And let me tell you about Tad. He is one of only 16,000 of the 50,000 highest scores, which represents less than 1% in Let's please congratulate all of these scholars. And now, we go to our TSA national winner. Will August Lookhouse please join us up front? Is August here? The Technology Students Association, TSA, is an organization for students to learn to read, to write, to communicate, and to learn how to use a computer. The Technology Students Association, TSA, is an organization for students interested in technology and STEM beyond the classroom. Over 5,000 students participate in the national TSA conference each year. One of the competitions with TSA requires students to write an impromptu synthesis essay in favor of or against an assigned topic on a current technological subject after being given three to five sources. They have 90 minutes to read the articles, write an essay, about five pages, this is unbelievable, and a bibliography in MLA format. In August, a 2015 graduate of Kettle Run won first in the nation. First in the nation. And he won this award in Dallas, Texas, and the topic for the national conference was the use of genetically modified foods and whether they should be grown or not. Please join us. He is currently attending North Carolina State University and studying environmental engineering, is that right? That's great. Please join us as we recognize this stellar student. Congratulations again. Will the FFA State Fair winners please join us up front? The Virginia State Fair in Dazwell draws FFA members from across the state of Virginia to compete in several agricultural-based competitions. This year, Liberty High School's C.L. Payne FFA chapter competed in junior dairymen, agri-science, and horticultural demonstrations, and forestry field day competitions. The chapter had first and second place winners in two categories. When I call your name, please step forward to be recognized by the board. Caitlin Graves and Peyton Welch received first place in their demonstration Planting Our Way to the Future. Emily Baker's demonstration titled Grooming My Way to Greatness received second place And during forestry field day, Evan Wasson placed second in the senior division log throw event. And Marco Martinez placed first in the junior division log toss. We also have our National Science Fair semifinalists, but we're not sure, is Joe Barrett present? He is? Great. Great. Joe, please come forward. Joe is a freshman at Falkir High School, and he is one of 300 students out of 2,230 students, entrants, chosen for the Broadcom Masters Honor. He was selected as a semifinalist in a national competition for middle school science fair winners as an eighth grader at Marshall Middle School. He won second place in the junior division of the Falkir County Regional Science Fair, which is going on this weekend, for his project in biomass energy. And this qualified him for the national competition. The director of the fair said Joe's depth of thought is reflective of his work. I think Joe's success can be attributed to his interest in the subject and to his dedication and meticulousness in the execution of the experiment. As a semifinalist, Joe will receive an award ribbon, certificate of accomplishment, the Broadcom Masters backpack, and a one-year family digital subscription. Please join us as we congratulate Joe for his exceptional honor. And finally, our student awards. Will Brandon Robertson and Anthony Ennis please join us up front? UTI, or Universal Technical Institute, is the training ground for NASCAR technicians. Brandon and Anthony, students of the nationally accredited automotive program at Falkir High School, you just saw their teachers honored, took second place overall in the Top Tech Challenge held at the University Technical Institute in Mooresville, North Carolina. Teams of two competed in various automotive challenges, including parts identification, brake problems, et cetera. By the end of the three-hour competition, Brandon and Anthony had won $7,500 in scholarship And we are also happy because of their acumen, we also received $1,500 in tools for our automotive program at Falkir High School. Congratulations, gentlemen, for that. That ends all of our student awards, but we do have one more award that we do want to mention, a very important recognition. The Virginia Association of Elementary School Principals honors each year an educator in Virginia who has made a significant contribution to educational reform and innovation. I'm being intimidated. Where's the HR director? I'm sorry. This award is appropriately named the Pathfinder Award, and this year, BAE SP has named Dave Jack, our superintendent, as the award winner for Virginia. Just to tell you a little bit about this, what is most significant is that Dr. Jack was nominated by those with whom he works. Joyce Surer, the principal of Coleman Elementary, said this of him. "Dr. Jack knows that we are educating our students for a future that most of us cannot yet imagine. By developing deep and critical thinkers, we will be giving our students the necessary tools for their future success because of his leadership. And from all of us who have had the pleasure of working with him, we congratulate you, Dr. Jack, on this award because you encourage us to give our students not only roots but wings." Congratulations.
Okay, folks, we sincerely thank you for coming tonight, but before we close...
We got one more. We got one more. Step aside. Folks, we can't let all of these recognitions go by tonight without also recognizing the work of our dear friend and colleague Cheryl Wolf. It has been my privilege to serve with Cheryl for the last eight years on this board. She will be leaving us in a few weeks. She did not ask permission, mind you, but she decided that she needed to go home again, and I think we all can understand that, and we certainly wish her the best. Cheryl has been the perfect example of what a school board member should be, and she has made us all just a little bit better for having served with her. During her tenure, the board approved a number of initiatives for the school division, including Bring Your Own Device approach to technology, the addition of 10th grade to Mountain Vista Governor's School next year, the addition of the Virginia Preschool Initiative classrooms this year, a new calendar model for FCPS, local government internships, STEM initiatives, a comprehensive strategic plan for the school division, elementary and middle school redistricting, the addition of a middle school program at Southeastern, the Falkir High School addition and renovation, and the hiring of Dr. Jack, just to name a few. The rest of us on the board are going to be challenged now because we're going to have to read just a little bit more. Those of you that don't know Cheryl, there was not an if, and, or but that she jumped over as she was reading all of this material. I mean, she read it once, she read it twice, and then she read it again. So we're all going to have to pick it up a little bit. We're going to have to visit a little more. Cheryl was always out in the schools if she could be. You know, she worked full-time, a lot of us work, but she made it a point, if she had to take vacation time, she took vacation time, if she had to use comp time, she used comp time. But she was in the schools as much as possible, and we're all going to have to try a little harder. And we're going to have to ask just a few more questions. Cheryl always made sure that every question that needed to be asked was asked and that it was answered before we moved forward. So I guess, as Dr. Jack likes to say, she always kept the main thing the main thing. Everything she has done has been to improve the quality of education in Falkir County. She has been an uncompromising advocate for the children and the staff of Falkir County Public Schools, and we certainly thank you, Cheryl, for sharing your time, your talents, and your dedication with us.
I thought if I made it through tonight without crying, it would be a miracle, so guess that one didn't work. It has been a total honor working here because of all of you. Every day I visited a school or I stood up here and listened to you talk, I was always astounded at how wonderful the employees are here and the students. I mean, what we heard tonight is totally amazing. So I want to thank you and all that stuff you said I did. All I did was read it and pass it. I mean, it's you all who did the work to do that. So thank you, thank you, and if you're ever in Reno, Nevada, look me up. But thank you, thank you very much.
And do you use Acrobat Reader? That thing?
I'll show you what I did with it. If I had to start over, I may not use it, but I'll show you what I did. Although my computer's dead, so I guess it didn't look very interesting the rest of it.
Okay, we're ready? All right, folks.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Ginger said wait.
Wait a minute, okay. We're okay? All right. Now for the announcements. The Falkir County School Board will host the Northeastern Regional Conference at Falkir High School this Wednesday, March the 9th, at 5:00 PM. There will be a joint work session with the Board of Supervisors, between the Board of Supervisors and the School Board, on Thursday, March the 10th, at 4:00 PM at the John Barton Payne Building. There will be a Mountain Vista's Governor's School Governing Board meeting on Thursday, March the 17th, at 8:00 AM in the Warren County School Board Office. There will be a Board of Supervisors Budget Public Hearing on Thursday, March the 17th, at 7:00 PM in the Falkir High School Auditorium. Spring break, as you know or may not know, is March the 29th through March the 25th. Chairman's night will be Monday, March the 28th, at 5:00 PM in the School Board Administration Conference Room. And there will be a School Board Work Session on Monday as well, March the 28th, commencing at 6:00 PM in the School Administration Conference Room. And there will be a Building Committee Meeting Thursday, March the 31st, at 8:30 AM in the School Administration Conference Room. There will be a School Health Advisory Committee Meeting on Wednesday, April the 6th, at 8:00 AM in the morning at Central Complex Meeting Room. There will be a School Support Council Meeting on Wednesday, April the 6th as well. This one is at 7:00 PM in the School Administration Conference Room. And there will be a Special Education Advisory Committee Meeting on Thursday, March the 7th, oh, April the 7th as well, at 5:30 PM in the Central Complex Meeting Room A. There will be a Finance Committee Meeting on Thursday, April the 11th, at 5:00 PM in the Falkir High School Library. And the next School Board Meeting will be Monday, April the 11th, at 7:00 PM at the Falkir High School Falcon Room. And folks, I would like to take a moment to thank Sam Cox and Greg Carter for hosting our meeting this evening, and April Plummer and Sheri Henning for their help with the reception. Citizens' Time. Community environment is an important component of a successful school division, and the School Board welcomes public input. Please be respectful of all the speakers and limit your comments to three minutes. Matters relating to personal or personnel issues cannot be discussed, okay? And it looks like we have just one person from the Senate District. Ribero?
Vanita.
Oh, yes, she is, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Bland, Dr. Jack, members of the School Board. I'm Vanita Ribero from the Center District. I'm a parent and I'm a teacher, and I'm directing the Falkir County Regional Science and Engineering Fair. I wanted to invite everyone to come out this Saturday to Falkir High School. We have 101 students from 6th grade through 12th grade, largely in part thanks to an initiative from Pam Pulver, who's got all the 6th graders on board doing science and engineering projects within the county. We also added two new private schools. This is our third year of operation, and we're fortunate to have a very good donor system with generous prizes, so over $2,000 in prizes will be awarded. And just as we had seen Joe Barrett earlier, who earned recognition nationally through this venue, we're able to send our students at the middle school level onto the National Broadcom Masters Competition, and then the high school students are able to go to the Virginia State Science and Engineering Fair, which is in its, like, 31st year of operation. So we have a lot of community support. We're going to have these, I think, like 24 judges out there. Once again, if anybody is into chess, we will have the gentleman who plays 12 concurrent games of chess, and the mayor of Warrenton has agreed to be out there, so did Senator Vogel. I'm not sure if she's going to have to be in Richmond or not. But I hope you will come out and join us. The judging goes on from 9:00 AM till 1:30 PM, which is when we invite the public. But naturally, members of the School Board, just come anytime and join us for a bite deep. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Folks, is there anyone else who wished to speak in a public hearing that maybe did not see the sign-up sheet or just didn't get a chance to sign up? Is there anyone else out there who wishes to speak? If not...
Meeting, which would be May 16th. So, thank you, Ladonna and Trina, for putting those questions together. Other topics of discussion, Project Kaleidoscope and the Identification for Visual Arts, making sure that we have students who qualify for those particular gifted categories that we do notice them. We will, on May 16th, meet again, and we'll have the results of those surveys, and I hope to be able to share those with you at the meeting, School Board Meeting that follows that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Wolf?
Okay, the only thing I have to share is the Faukeer Excellence in Education Foundation is putting out a significant effort to raise money on the Give Local Piedmont, a one-day fundraising event that's gonna happen on May 3rd. We're actually meeting with all the schools, so if you have a school that you participate with, invite them to join the competition. And basically, what the foundation is doing is if the schools, if people, people from the schools select your school to donate, then your school gets 10% of anything you raise, and we're gonna award a high school, a middle school, and a elementary school that has the most number of donations based on their enrollment, and they can, each will, one at each level can get up to $5,000 for their school. So, talk to your schools on how you can get donations in on that day, on May 5th, and it should be a great opportunity for all the nonprofits in the area to raise money on that one crowdfunding day. So, May 3rd, 2016.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Grove?
Just wanted to mention a couple of things. First of all, Ginger, can we get these two papers to Kira Holland? She was, last Thursday, she was featured on the front of the region section of the Freelance Star in a story about the upcoming spelling, regional spelling bee, and then Sunday, she got the whole page again as the champion. So...
That's right.
Congratulations to her, and we can get these to her. Okay, thank you.
She's, she's from Marshall, right?
I believe she is.
She's from Faukeer.
Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead.
That's her. Just wanted to give a shout-out and a thank you to all the folks that were so nice to us during the month of February. Breakfast, I didn't, I wasn't able to hit all of the events, but breakfast at Mary Walter and Miller, gifts from Faukeer and Liberty and Taylor and Greenville and Southeastern and Kettle Run, a wonderful program at Pearson, and also a shout-out to all the CTE folks. What a great fair that was, and I know the art people are happy about the addition of the arts over there in the old gym. Yeah, it was really nice, and I saw a lot of excitement there also, so, yeah, good job.
Okay, there was no Mountain Vista Governor's School Governing Board meeting during the month of February. However, I, along with my wife, participated in the Read Across America Event last week. We read to the kids up at Clark Thompson Elementary School. That was always great, always has been great. And this past Friday, I had a captive audience at Pearson Elementary School. Of all the teachers, the staff, and the students, I was invited to speak in recognition of Black History Month. They wanted to know what it was like when I was growing up here in Faukeer County, back in the early, early to mid 50s and 60s and 70s, and, and I shared with them my life events, growing up in Faukeer County. And the students were really engaged. I really had them on the edge of their seats. It was, it was quite entertaining. But again, thanks to Pearson for the invitation to be part of that program. Dr. Jack?
I just wanted to mention that Faukeer High School, undefeated state champions, academic team. Did not lose a single match the entire year, and is Vanita still here?
No, she left.
She just left.
Oh, well, Vanita's son was one of the members of that academic team, and I suspect some of the other AP Scholars were on that team as well, but undefeated, did not lose a single match, state champs as of the 27th, so congratulations to them.
Outstanding. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have a legislative update. I didn't know if you wanted me to give that now or later. I was just giving my committee update when I went by before.
Okay, go ahead.
You tell me?
Yeah.
Okay, good. And I didn't do my shout-outs, and I had little notes here for myself, too. Ashley Bringenberg, teacher at Marshall Middle, thank you for inviting me to be a science fair judge. I really enjoyed that. I learned about Gecko's and Deflategate, and is Tom Brady really a cheater? And, oh my goodness, I had the best time. I ran the science fair in Manassas City, so I was just thrilled to be invited to be a judge at Marshall Middle. Thank you. And thank you for Wendy Wilcox, grade 2 and 3. I got to hear some beautiful singers. And C. Hunter Ritchie made a basket of cards with 2,000 different messages from the students for me, saying, "Happy School Board Appreciation Month." And I have some of my favorite cards and letters here. I mean, there were, there were hundreds and hundreds of letters that the, that the kids wrote, handwritten, handnotes, drawings. I mean, it was beautiful. It reminded me of being a teacher again. "We like you" was one of them. I said, "Thank you." And one of them said, "Thank you for representing our district, and thank you for all the snow days." That's Dr. Jack, it's not me. And someone drew a picture of me, and it was just absolutely adorable. And, "Thank you for everything you do, you're really cool." Thought that one was good, too. And then my favorite kindergartner, "I love you," is what she wrote, in a heart. It was beautiful. Thank you, C. Hunter Ritchie, so much for that. I enjoyed the CTE Pathways Fair, and I also very much enjoyed meeting with Mr. Freeman. I had met him for the first time, and Donna Grove and I will be visiting Kettle Run High School in Mr. Davidson's classroom. Can't wait. I will be brief with the legislative update, because we're in that weird time where things have passed the House, things have passed the Senate, and now things are garbled up, kinda waiting to see, does the governor sign all of these things? So, when you look through, you can look at this online, some of them are failed to report, some of them pass by for the day, some of them are in committee, some of them are in substitution language, but it's the end here, we're getting to the last 10 days. And I thought it would be of interest, those that pass the House and the Senate and are now signed by the governor, I think those are the most important. The one I found of interest, that I thought would affect us here in Faukeer County, students with limited English proficiency, there will now be an alternative to the 11th grade Standards of Learning Assessment, requiring the Board of Education to consider assessments aligned to the standards of learning formatted in a way that measures the content knowledge while still assessing students that are English-language learners. That was signed. Transportation agreements for field trips. Local school boards can now agree to work with non-public schools to enter into agreements to provide student transportation to and from school field trips. Public school physical activity requirement passed, signed by the governor. Students in grades kindergarten through 5th grade, it does not start until 2018, but it does require 20 minutes of physical activity per day, on an average of 100 minutes per week for the school year for students in kindergarten through grade 5. The current requirement for students in grades 6 through 12 did not change with this bill. Additionally, signed the Return to Learn Protocol for student athletes with concussions, and the Return to Learn Protocol for students who've been treated with pediatric cancer was also signed by the governor. Our school nurses, I think most have left, but would be interested in this one, I believe. Administration of certain drugs by our school employees and nurses. It now provides a prescriber can authorize an employee of a school division licensed by the Board of Education to give, be trained in the administration of insulin and glucagen to assist with the administration of both of those to students diagnosed as having diabetes. There were several bills defeated, one that got probably the most press, the bill for, the TBO Bill, as many of you know, students who receive home instruction, the ability to participate in interscholastic programs, that was vetoed by Governor McAuliffe. And also defeated was taking the authority from local school boards for being able to establish guidelines for students with short-term and long-term suspension. The reason that was defeated is because the Board of Education was gonna be providing the guidelines, taking sort of the authority away from local school boards. So, that one was defeated, and I think in, people were applauding. The other last that was defeated was prohibited use of tobacco products on school buses, and you might say, "Wait a minute, why in the world was that one defeated?" It was defeated because both House and Senate felt that local school boards already had their policies on that, and that it was clear, and we didn't need a new one. Just new wording on electronic cigarettes, defined as nicotine vapor product, to include all of those being prohibited, which I think we would agree with. And we will know more, because this is the end. We have two weeks left. I think, Dr. Jack, you've probably gotten a copy of the budget updates, House and Senate. Bottom line, the House provides $39 million more than the governor's budget, the Senate provides $27 million less than the governor's budget. We got a little fight on our hands, and we'll see what comes up with that, and hopefully it comes out in our favor. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Financial Management Report. Mrs. Sresta?
Mr. Chairman, ladies of the Board, Dr. Jack, this is your financial update as of January 30th, 2016. Since there's no visual, I'll be describing the major funds. The first one I'll be talking about is our main school operating fund. This is our primary $131 million fund. As of this date, revenues and expenditures are consistent with prior years. Revenues are tracking at about 55%, and expenditures are tracking at about 53%. In terms of our school asset replacement fund, this is the fund that we have to replace major school assets. The fund is, has a positive balance, and we're tracking at about 80% with revenues and around 29% with expenditures. The big thing that we were waiting on here was the transfer for the, for the remaining school buses, and that's due to happen pretty soon in the next week or so. The school textbook fund is also in a positive balance. Revenues are consistent with prior years. Expenditures are slightly behind, but that's not necessarily a bad thing. We're just, as school books, as textbook adoption happens, we, those expenditures will catch up. The school nutrition fund, revenues are slightly behind. I mentioned last time that VDOE was doing an upgrade to their financial system, so we do expect that a lot of that will be cleared up and caught up by the next update. We are monitoring closely what the impact of the snow days will be on, in terms of revenues. Obviously, if there is in school, we're not, you know, generating that revenue. And finally, the health insurance fund, that one you'll see in your notes marked as yellow, and all that means is that the staff, budget, finance, and HR will be monitoring, monitoring it very closely. But basically, we are currently at 6% higher than the expenditures over the same time period in the previous year. However, as of this report, the trend was slightly going on a downward trend. So, we do feel as staff that we're still within the normal ranges of fluctuation. So, we'll just be monitoring this a lot more closely and reporting to, in the next committee meeting. And that's all I have.
Very well. Any questions from the board members?
No, just a comment. I already, I already told him, I really liked the committee minutes, the way they were set up, and liked the stoplight. Makes it easy.
All right.
I agree.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Ms. Downs? Or who's? Okay, here we go. The Human Resources Department report.
Good evening. The HR Department activities for the month of February, we currently have two certified vacancies and four, five vacancies with the classified staff. That's for the current positions. We do have several positions that have been announced for next year due to resignations or retirements. Speech pathologists and several positions for the Mountain Vista Governor's School. In terms of recruitment, we had our quarterly job fair on February 24th. Despite the wonderful weather we had that evening, we had close to 120 participants. Our next quarterly job fair will be held on May the 10th. We have our new hire orientation scheduled for April the 6th. That is now held once a month. You see listed on your report, our college visits. We're at VCU today and go back tomorrow for interviews. And then our annual job fair, we're gearing up for that. It will be held on April 16th. We'll hold the meet and greet, similar to the way we did last year, followed by interviews, and then individual interviews that they can, that administrators can set up through the meet and greet to carry into the afternoon. Do you have any questions?
Questions, comments from the board?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number nine, the consent agenda. Matter of motion, please.
I move that the School Board approve the minutes of the February 8th School Board Meeting and February 25th Special School Board Meeting and Work Session, the payment of bills, Religious Exemption 030716.1, and Personnel Recommendations, which include the new positions or newly hired, hiring of two teachers, one interpreter, one instructional assistant, and one bus driver, the resignation of one teacher, one bus driver, one office associate, one custodian, school nutrition employee, and one certification specialist, the retirement of one teacher, and the release of one custodian.
Second. There's been a motion and second that the School Board approved the following. The minutes of the February 8th School Board Meeting and February 25th Special School Board Meeting and Work Session, the payment of bills, Religious Exemption 030716.1, and Personnel Recommendations, which include new position or newly hired two teachers, one interpreter, one instructional assistant, and one bus driver, the resignation of one teacher, one bus driver, one office associate, one custodian, school nutrition employee, and one certification specialist, retired one teacher, and released one custodian. End of discussion.
Since I won't be here during the retirement party, I just would like to say a thank you to Richard Deardoff, an outstanding teacher from Kettle Run who's retiring that we read on here. And there's probably hundreds, if not thousands, of kids that will never forget him. So, thank you, Mr. Deardoff, wherever you are.
Thank you. All approves say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say no? Passes unanimously. Information items, the youth art endorsement resolution. Ms. Pappas?
Thank you, Mr. Bland.
associate, one custodian, school nutrition employee, and one certification specialist, the retirement of one teacher, and the release of one custodian.
Second.
There's been a motion and second that the school board approved the following: the minutes of the February 8th school board meeting, and February 25th special school board meeting and work session, the payment of bills, religious exemption 030716.1, and personnel recommendations, which include new position or newly hired two teachers, one interpreter, one instructional assistant, and one bus driver, the resignation of one teacher, one bus driver, one office associate, one custodian, school nutrition employee, and one certification specialist, retired one teacher, and released one custodian. End of discussion.
Since I won't be here during the retirement party, I just would like to say a thank you to Richard Deardoff, an outstanding teacher from Kettle Run who's retiring that we read on here. And there's probably hundreds, if not thousands, of kids that will never forget him. So, thank you, Mr. Deardoff, wherever you are.
Thank you. All approved, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Pass as unanimously. Information items, the youth art endorsement resolution, Ms. Pappas.
Thank you, Mr. Plant, Dr. Jack, and school board members. As you know, March is Youth Art Month. It is a collaboration, it is celebrated around the country, in all our schools, and in collaboration with our community. This year, it's our fifth year of the Art Walk on Main Street, where 39 businesses have displayed a total of 103 works of art. The culmination of this will be the Arts Festival on April 1st and 2nd at Kettle Run High School. We are now presenting each of you with an invite, with an art pen created by my students in an invitation to Saturday's gallery opening. We are also asking that you sign the endorsement that reads as follows: Whereas art education is a viable academic endeavor and contributes educational benefits to all elementary and secondary students, including the following: Art education develops students' creative problem-solving and critical thinking abilities. Art education teaches sensitivity to beauty, order, and other expressive qualities. Art education gives students a deeper understanding of multicultural values and beliefs. Art education reinforces and brings to life what students learn in other subjects. Art education interrelates students' learning in art production, art history, art criticism, and aesthetics. And whereas our national leaders have acknowledged the necessity of including arts experience in all students' education, and whereas March is officially recognized as Youth Art Month, I endorse the observance of Youth Art Month and encourage the support of quality school art programs for children and youth. Okay? I know that Saturday's also the Science Fair, but our art gallery opening for our Art Walk on Main Street begins at 11:00 a.m., so you can swing by and then head on to Farcure High School. And I also want to take this opportunity to thank Ms. Wolf for her hard work, dedication, and support in the arts. Thank you very much.
When did you say the art festival is?
The art festival is April 1st and 2nd at Kettle Run High School.
Put it in the calendar right now.
April 1st, Friday from 6:00 to 8:00, April 2nd, Saturday from 12:00 to 3:00.
Kettle Run.
Kettle Run, yeah.
Yes, that is correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Resolutions have been signed. 10B, the 2015-16 calendar update options. Dr. Jack?
Mr. Chairman, we mentioned during the workshop, work session, that we are down to .8 days of bank time, so we were looking for flexibility from the board in terms of making adjustments to the calendar. Although I just checked the Weather Channel, and they're not calling for any snow for 14, well, in the next 14 days, there's no snow. In fact, it's going to be 79 on Thursday.
Oh.
So.
Bring it.
But you never know what could happen in February, excuse me, March, because it's a crazy month. But in the event that we do have to miss time, we're asking for flexibility in terms of adding minutes potentially to the elementary school day, because the high school, middle school bank so much more time than elementary schools. Or turn one of the half-days at the end of the year into a whole day if we need to, or add school days on to the end of the school year if we miss an exorbitant number of days between now and the end of the school year.
Okay. I do believe you want to send that to action?
Yes, sir.
So the chair will entertain a motion for moving that item to action?
I move that we move the 2015-16 calendar update options to action this evening.
Second.
Okay, we're going to move X, move 10B to action item 11D for approval this evening. End of discussion. Hearing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. It will be moved to action item for approval this evening. Wow. The next item, of course, is something that we, we have to do, and let's discuss the procedures and the criteria for filling the school board vacancy that's going to happen with Ms. Wolf So folks, there is, let me, let me go through some notes here. There's some legal items that we have to take care of as we move through this process. The dates that we have, we will go over, and we're going to have to make sure that we stick as close to these dates as we possibly can to move this through. I myself had to go through the same process when I was appointed back in January, February of 2005, so I, you know, I know how important it is. As you know, Ms. Wolf, the lead district school board member, has resigned her position effective March the 25th. Now, Virginia law states that a vacancy in any elected local office may be filled within 45 days of the vacancy occurring, okay? I don't know if you've had a chance to look through this whole packet.
Yep.
But let's start with the calendar for the appointment vacancy. As you can see, the, the dates are rather crunched. March the 7th, we're talking about it right now, the criteria for the selection process. By next Monday, it looks like we have to advertise for the letters of interest. By March the 31st, there's a deadline for all of those letters of interest to be received by our school board clerk, Ms. Callahan. And on April the 11th, we will convene to interview candidates at a school board meeting. April the 25th, there will be a public hearing. And the last date is May the 9th, where we, at that time, hope to appoint a new board member. Now, like I said, I hope that you have had a chance to look at these dates.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any, anything that you wish to add, change, or question about these particular dates that we have before us?
I just had a question as to where we advertise.
Are there any local, both local papers, I do believe, online and in, and in a paper fashion, correct?
Does it, does it go out?
And online?
On the website.
Through, yeah, on the website.
Website, that's what I mean, the website.
Through the e-notify or something, not the e-notify, but through Karen's, just on the school website.
The school board website and the two local papers, the internet part of the newspapers, and on the, in the paper copies, okay?
Okay.
Can you also review what happens after the appointment of the new school board member in May? What would happen then in November? Just for that.
Oh, yeah. In, in, in November, even though this person will be appointed by the board, there will still have to be a special election in November for this position. So, you know, this candidate, whoever they may be, it's, it's only there appointed until the results of the special election to be held in November.
Yep.
Okay? Thanks for reminding me of that. Any, any further discussion on the dates? We're okay with the dates?
Yep.
Okay. Now, the other item of interest, of course, is the criteria for selection. One that is, that demonstrates interest in the community, available time to commit to the school board, community involvement, personal knowledge of the school system, term of residency in that particular district, in this case, the lead district, and professional experience. Anything you wish to add, or question, or comment about on the criteria for the selection?
No.
We're okay for that?
Yep.
All right, now, as far as the advertisement for the letters of interest, the Farcure County School Board will have a vacancy created by the March 25th, 2016 resignation of school board representative for the lead district for Farcure County. Now, qualified voters of the lead district who may be interested in seeking appointment for this position are encouraged to apply. Applicants must submit a statement of interest, not to exceed 300 words, and a resume to Ginger Callahan, our clerk, Farcure County School Board, at 320 Hospital Drive, Warranton, Virginia, 20186, no later than 5:00 p.m. on March the 31st, 2016. The school board traditionally meets on the second and fourth Monday evenings of each month. The school board anticipates interviewing applicants in a public meeting beginning on April the 11th, 2016, and will hold a public hearing to receive citizen comments about the appointment on April the 25th, 2016, at 6:00 p.m. in the Farcure County School Board Office located at 320 Hospital Drive, Warranton, Virginia. Any questions about the letters of interest?
No, and Brad's okayed all of this, right?
Brad is on board.
May I just suggest that we do add that they can email them to me?
You can email as well. Okay, because it will be on, on the website, so they can, okay, respond back via email to gcallahan@fcps1.org as well. Very good. Very good.
Okay.
Other questions or, or comments in reference to that? Now, having said all of that, we will have to take action tonight in reference to some resolutions that are applicable to this particular job vacancy or school board vacancy. We can discuss that right now, or we can, I would rather go ahead and do this part of it right now, so when we get to the action item, we would already have, have talked about and understood and questioned the resolutions, if that's okay with the board. Okay? The first resolution says, whereas the county school board of Farcure, Virginia, thereafter called the board, is comprised of members elected from each of the five election districts of Farcure. Now, whereas Cheryl M. Wolf was a successful candidate for the lead district seat at the general election that was held in November 2015, and was elected to take office for the term January the 1st, 2016, through December the 31st, 2019. Whereas, by written notification to the board, which notification is attached hereto as Exhibit A, Ms. Wolf has announced her resignation of her seat effective March the 25th, 2016, leaving a vacancy in the lead district seat. Whereas, the board pursuant to Virginia Code 24.2-226 is required to petition the Circuit Court of the County of Farcure to issue a writ of election, and now therefore be it resolved that the school board attorney is authorized to file with the Circuit Court of the County of Farcure a timely petition of writ of election in substantially the same form as petition for a writ of election that's attached as Exhibit, Exhibit B, which I also have a copy of as well. And that, of course, you all should have received a copy and have examined. Is there anything in this particular resolution that you have heartburn about, or have questions or wish to comment about?
No, sir.
Having none, then I will move on to the next resolution. That says, let's see, whereas the county school board of Farcure, Virginia, thereafter called the board, is comprised of members elected from each of the five election districts of Farcure. Whereas Cheryl M. Wolf was a successful candidate for the lead district seat at the general election that was held in November 2015, and was elected to take office for the term January the 1st, 2016, through December the 31st, 2019. Whereas Ms. Wolf announced her resignation from her lead district seat effective March the 25th, 2016, leaving a vacancy in the lead district seat. Whereas the remaining members of the board pursuant to Virginia Code 24.2-228 may appoint an individual to fill the vacancy created by Ms. Wolf's resignation within 45 days of the occurrence of the vacancy. Whereas the board desires to adopt a calendar for the activities required to fill the school board seat, and to approve advertising relating to the requirements for filling the vacancy. Those are the two items we previously discussed. So now, therefore be it resolved that the attached calendar, which we've already looked at, is adopted for the activities required by the board in filling the lead district school board seat, and it is further resolved that the school board approves the advertisement for letters of interest in substantially the same form as the advertisement which is attached, and we are all made aware of. Again, I see you're over there laughing, I'm gonna throw something at her in a minute. Any questions or comments in reference to this particular resolution?
No.
So we're all on the same page and chapter as to how we go about the appointment and the appointment process. Okay? Now, the next item, committee appointments to the Parks and Rec Co-op, which Cheryl was appointed to, and the School Health Advisory Committee. I am open for discussion of how we may, how we want to approach this, given, well, okay, you go ahead and start that.
I have, just, my thought is since Parks and Rec Co-op, we meet quarterly, so I don't think there's any hurry to get somebody on there right away. We probably have time to get a new lead district person on board, and then let them step in for Parks and Rec Board. And the School Health Advisory is not really an appointed position. Cheryl kind of stepped up and said she would be on that committee. So again, I don't know if there's a, mm, uh-uh. It's not one of our stand-
It's not required by law-
It's not required.
-that we have a health advisory. But we've always appointed somebody to it.
Yeah. At this point, we're kind of gonna hold off, I think, if that's all right.
I concur. I, I think, waiting until we get somebody on the board and, and then appointing those responsibilities to our new board member, I think, was suffice. I really don't think that we need to rush into that and appoint one of us. We're all on other committees and subcommittees, and busy with the budget and, and all of these things right now. And I concur with you, Ms. Grove.
Okay. Well, and their, their meeting is the first Wednesday of each month at 8:00, but Mr. Finn attends them all, so I think he's-
And Cheryl, and, and Ms. Grove is, she goes to the Parks and Rec meeting, she's on, on that committee as well.
Yep.
So it's not like we don't have somebody that's represented.
And we can rotate to health advisory if we need to. I don't think any of us are ready to pick up another committee right now, so Frank, if we need somebody there, we'll rotate around, make it work. Okay?
Thanks.
I'm okay.
Agreed.
Okay here?
Yes.
We're all, concur. Okay. All right, let's see here, let's move on to-
We already did the-
Yeah, we already moved the action item.
Yep.
Yep. So now we are actually in the action items, and the first one is the proposed budget. The chair will entertain a motion for the approval of the FYI 2017 Superintendent's Proposed Budget.
I move that the school board approve the FYI 2017 Superintendent's Proposed Budget as presented at the January 27th, 2016 school board meeting and February 22nd, 2016 school board meeting, with a duly advertised public hearing on February 22nd, 2016, in the amount of $134,705,788.
Second.
There's been a motion and second that the school board approve the FYI 2017 Superintendent's Proposed Budget as presented at the January the 27th, 2016 school board meeting and February the 22nd, 2016 school board meeting, with a duly advertised public hearing on February the 22nd, 2016, in the amount of $134,705,788. End of discussion. Hearing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All opposed, say no. Again, let the record show that the motion carries unanimously. Uh, resolution for authorization of the petition for, uh, special election?
I move that the school board adopt the resolution authorizing the school board attorney to file with the Falkir County Circuit Court a petition for writ of election.
Second.
Um, I just would like to say, Mr. Chair, that I'm going to abstain from these votes.
Very well. Let the records reflect that, please. Okay, motion and second, any discussion, any further discussion? Having none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Resolution to adopt the calendar and approve the advertisement required for filling the lead district vacancy. Motion to be entertained?
I recommend that the school board adopt the resolution approving the calendar for activities required by the board in filling the lead district school board member seat and the advertisement for letters of interest in substantially the same form as attached to the resolution.
Second.
There's been a motion and second that the school board adopt the resolution approving the calendar for activities required by the board in filling the lead district school member, school board member seat and the advertisement of letters of interest in substantially the same form as the attached to the resolution. Any discussion? Ms. Wolf, you will abstain from this as well? Let, let the records reflect that, please. Having no discussion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no? Okay. Uh, the calendar update options, which is what we moved from the information item, uh, motion to be entertained?
I move that the school board authorize the superintendent to revise the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen school year calendar implementing one or more of the options presented to the school board on Monday, March seventh, two thousand and sixteen if any more instructional days or hours are missed.
Second.
Motion and second that the school board authorize the superintendent to revise the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen school year calendar implementing one or more of the options presented to the school board on Monday, March the seventh, two thousand and sixteen, if any more instructional days or hours are missed. Any discussion?
As I understand, Dr. Jack, we, we don't need that now, correct? This is if any more are missed. Okay.
Right. Elementary's point eight days remaining in bank time. High school, middle school have several days remaining in bank time.
Thanks.
All right, everybody, just keep your fingers crossed and get us through March, okay? Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Again, motion carries. Is there anything else to come before the board in, in an official capacity? Ms. Wolf, I know you've got something to say.
No, no, I, I just want to say how it's been a great eight years working with you guys. And a great small part of the year working with you. But it's been wonderful. I've learned a lot.
I want to say how proud I am to have served with you. Like Ms. Grove said, you have made all of us better. Um, you have always come to the board meetings well-prepared, well-informed, and ready to make a decision. And if you weren't absolutely clear about the path that you wanted to take, you didn't hesitate to ask more questions or make other comments, and you drove right down until you got something that you were satisfied, that you were satisfied with. And, and I certainly admire that. You just, you just didn't pass the buck. I certainly admire that.
I thought I was always such a pain.
No. No.
We didn't say that, Cheryl.
Just a little-
Yeah, right, right.
I- in all seriousness, um, we, from, from the bottom of our heart, I sincerely appreciate everything that you have done, everything that you are doing and everything that I know you will continue to do, uh, in the interest of students, whether it be here, whether it be in Reno, or whatever the case may be.
Well, thank you, and I will miss all of you. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. We are now in adjournment. Folks, again, thanks for coming out tonight. Hope to see you again.